Good evening, everybody. We're going to start out tonight with a public hearing. I should say before that the mayor is attending remotely, and he feels it's appropriate to have the meeting chaired by somebody in person. That person is me. I'm Paul Mayo, I'm council president. We're going to start out with a public hearing. And president at the hearing are all of the council members plus the mayor remotely. And the hearing has to do with zoning issue. And Jared, would you explain in detail what that is?
I would be happy to. So within the packets under the public hearing, which is on page two, the proposed ordinance is on page three, and there is a red line starting on page 10. Just of this is, city staff was looking at some of the signage requirements and some business owners that were looking to do signage. The height of projecting signs came into question. We took a look just at, you know, historical signs that have been up other communities and did feel that the minimum height requirement, how high they have to be from the ground, did seem a bit high. So looking to adjust that from 12 to 10 to be more in line with historical signs as well as other communities. And that is just being changed throughout each section of the signs. So it covers each district.
Thank you, Jared. At this time, I'd be looking for testimony in favor of the subject. If you have any testimony in favor of the subject, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your testimony to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor? Okay, hearing non, I'd be looking for testimony in opposition of the subject. The same stipulations. All right, hearing non, I'll declare this public hearing closed at 6:03. We'll jump right into the city council meeting, which I call to order at also 6:03, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barb, would you please read the opening meeting statement?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you, Barb. Would you please take a role?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Porczatki?
Here.
Henry Velikar?
Here.
10 present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Barb. Would you start out the staff introduction, please?
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
Aaron Johnson, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Kivala, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Brian Hosele, Chief of Police.
And I think we have Josh Warner in the control room. All right. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. This is an agenda of a whole bunch of items that are grouped together that we will vote on just once. If anybody has anything on the consent agenda that they'd like moved to the regular agenda, now it's a time to speak up. Okay, I'd be looking for a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve. Second? Move by Olson, second by Dykstra, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. All right. We move to the regular agenda. We have a request to move item, what's the item? Item eight, under new business, to be item one under new business. If that's acceptable to everybody, we can approve the regular agenda with that in mind. Looking for a motion and a second to approve the regular agenda. Move to approve? Second? Move by Martin, second by Peterson, to approve tonight's regular agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. All right. Under non-agenda items, announcements and correspondence, we have the annual review of Code of Ethics. I'm assuming everybody has reviewed the Code of Ethics and is in agreement with them? Do we need to take a motion? Okay. Okay, if everybody's in agreement, we'll just place that in file. Next, we have the library annual report presentation by Library Director Eric Bailey. Thank you. You're up.
Aaron, if you could bring up the most recent draft of the report? Get up and stretch my legs here. Okay. Twenty twenty-three annual report from the Wapack Area Public Library. First slide. Are the, is the values, vision, and mission of the Wapack Area Public Library. These are included always at the start of every report, as they're central to everything we do. So when we evaluate our current services and new opportunities, this is the rubric that we use. My presentation this year will be a little bit different. In the first half of the presentation, I'm going to focus on the numbers and measurable outcomes. These are important, and I don't want to ignore them. However, I'm also aware that pretty much all of these have been included in your packets throughout the year. So in my presentation to you today, I want to highlight some of the overall trends and takeaways, but then spend more time talking about new additions and happenings at the library. Next slide. So to start, a breakdown of the end-of-year circulation numbers for 2023. Numbers and trends are pretty good, showing a year-over-year increase. Librarians like to say that libraries, public libraries, are not just buildings full of stuff, and that is certainly true. However, we do have a lot of great stuff and we make, that we make available for the community. And how much that stuff gets used and by whom determines our annual reimbursement from the county, making it an important statistic. So as you can see, versus 2022, we improved by 5.28% for physical materials and 15.04% in usage of electronic materials, which is good. We've not yet rebounded, in terms of total numbers, to 2019 levels, but the margin continues to shrink. And in most of our print collections, we're about par with where we were pre-pandemic. Most of that difference is less circulation of DVDs and CDs. Next slide. Other usage numbers. Use of library service was up in most categories this last year. Two of the biggest numbers that I want to draw attention to are the 28.35 increase in visits to the library and the 14.21% increase in the number of Wapacka library cardholders. So usage and checkout numbers have continued to increase in 2024, and that means that these are continuing trends that we have continued to see in the new year. Very quickly on collection. In 2023, we provided access to a grand total of 330, 288 items from our local Wapacka Area Public Library collection. Through the Outagami-Wapacka library system, we're able to provide access to additional 1.6 million physical items. Those are items that are held at other libraries in the consortium that we can have here, most of them within one to two days. We're also able to provide additional access to 1.5 million digital items through our access to Hoopla. So we provide access through many different formats to many different things. It's incredible, as well as at times with all of the collections that need to be supported, a bit of a budgetary challenge as well. Jumping to the next slide for operations. So these are the percentages as far as revenue and revenue sources, as well as expenses and what the revenue is being spent on. The percentages for sources of revenue and expense categories are pretty close to the same as in 2022. In revenue, 90.5% of our revenue is public funds. That 9.5% coming from non-tax sources is actually really, really good comparatively. Most libraries don't have a number that high, and it does speak to how fortunate we are to have the foundation and friends working to support the library. Last year, pay and benefits did account for 73.61% of our expenses, and our total FTE was 13.84. In reporting for 2023, we have decreased by 7.88%. This is accounted for by two things. Half of it is just in how the report is completed. In working with OWLS staff in filing our annual report, we were encouraged not to include any of the hours for the facility supervisor or janitorial staff. Most libraries don't, and we had been encouraged to do that for some time. And so we took the step to make our numbers more comparable to others in our peer group. The other half of the equation is that we have been working to be more efficient, recognizing the challenges facing public funding and that we have a responsibility to do as much as we can, as efficiently as we can with the public funds that we're entrusted with. So we've been reaching out to other libraries, seeking suggestions on efficiencies. Been using statistics to compare staffing levels and carefully analyzing need and workflow before filling all hours of an open position. So we've had, I think, about 20 hours that we've cut back in terms of staffing hours for existing staff, as well as, I think, just short of 40 hours of positions that we left unfilled after those evaluations. So this is one I want to highlight in particular because in my time here on the library board, I've gotten a lot of, run into a lot of misconceptions as far as how the reimbursement from the county works. So I am going to take a stab at an explanation here, in part because we are in our final year of the five-year agreement with the county. So they are in the process of discussing what that reimbursement is going to look like for the next five. So trying to simplify this way down, and I'm hoping this, this works, and potentially making everybody a bit hungry, let's think of the total number of checkouts, the total library usage in a year as a pie. When setting the budget for the next year, planning, you can think of that as planning to bake the next delicious pie that's going to be eaten, slashed, used by municipal and county residents. The county basically has a formula that they're required by the state to use in order to calculate a fair contribution for their portion of what their residents will use for that, are projected to use of that pie. The formula basically looks back two years because that's the most recent fully finalized set of calculations for circulation, library usage, as well as finance numbers. Everything has gone fully through the audit process and been completely hammered out. And the equation asks, what did that last pie cost? And what percentage of that pie was eaten by county residents? And multiplying those two factors, very simplified, provides what the recommended, recommended county reimbursement for that next fiscal year would be. So it is a little bit more complicated than that. The state does also allow the county to give itself a 30% discount on that number. We've been fortunate that Wapacka County, with its most recent five years, had opted in and said, we're not going to take any kind of a discount. We're going to reimburse 100% of the formula, which is fantastic. The county did also opt that they would also pay for some of the digital usage by county residents as well, which is something that the state formula doesn't require at all and is just something that they had decided to do, which is fantastic and which we are extremely grateful for. So the way that the formula works, the actual total circulation doesn't really matter. So if the percentage of usage between how much of it is, what percentage is municipal and what percentage is county residence stays the same, if it's always 40/60, then you can have 100 circs or you can have a million circs, and the reimbursement is going to stay the same. We saw this most recently during the pandemic, where obviously, if you think back to the circulation chart, library usage in terms of checkouts went way down, as you would expect in 2020. But there wasn't a similar fluctuation with county reimbursement because the formula is set up to factor that out and focus instead on those percentages. So what does it mean for the city council? Part of what it means is that you get the most critical spot in the process. So the city is basically the only entity that gets to vote on what funds it will provide. Any move up or down that the city chooses to make in terms of funds allotted then impact everybody else who is stuck using the formula provided by the state that basically just spits out a number as far as the recommended reimbursement. So that is county revenue. And highlighting then some things that have been new at the library here in 2023 and into 2024. One that I know I've talked about a few times is the Job Center. Like most job centers in the state, the Wapacka Job Center has been permanently closed. Appleton also no longer has Job Center. There is no Job Center with a physical location in either Wapacka or Outagami counties. The number of physical locations overall continues to shrink. I believe that there's just one in all of the Fox Valleys. I think that's in Manasha, and that's pretty much it. Ideally, I think the state is moving towards getting them all closed and having the resources provided that had been provided through physical job centers available online. They have specifically stated and continue to state on their website that for those who struggle to access the resources online, that they should go to their public library, which for those folks, that has increasingly made public libraries the de facto job centers for a certain percentage of folks needing those services. After those announcements went out, we pretty quickly started seeing a growing number of folks coming in, asking us Job Center questions. And with that increase, we decided that we should pull some resources together to better serve those individuals. So we had found some underutilized space in the library as well as repurposed an existing workstation and some existing furniture and gotten some signage together and created a Job Center at the library, which we have added to with additional information as well as relevant parts of our library collection, information on job searches, on resumes and career planning and things like that. Laura Jandasek has been the staff member that's taken a leading role in working with job seekers and creating this space. I cannot overstate what a fantastic job that she has done. There are a number of folks who are employed right now in Wapacka because of her help, because she took the time to work with them on getting in applications and connecting them with opportunities that were there. So it's also a service that tends to pull in users from all over. Most of the libraries in Wapacka County are pretty small. If you happen to live in Scandinavia, you know, they've usually just got one very part-time individual at the, in the library there most times during the day and providing much attention to work with somebody on an in-depth question like a job search is a challenge. So next item, passport services. This is another new item that we have here in the last year that we got started in November of 2023. So the State Department requires new applicants for a passport, and those with long-expired passports to have their application processed at a designated acceptance facility. To make this worthwhile, the State Department provides for acceptance agencies to collect and keep a standardized fee for each application processed. This $35 per application charge adds up surprisingly quickly, and currently, we are on course at present for $7,500 of new revenue in 2024 from our passport program. This is also a great outreach opportunity. As a library, we have more in different hours than existing acceptance agencies like the county clerk. This was the big reason why we felt that this was a good service for us to begin offering is that we have hours later in the day, we have weekend hours, that would be easier for families and others working folks to make use of. So in our first 50 applicants, we also had people from all over, from Stevens Point, from Nina, Appleton, a ton from New London, in addition to a lot of Wapacka residents. Many had never been to our library before. We had one family in back in January who had moved to Wapacka during the pandemic and had never been into the library before. They were really excited to learn what a nice library Wapacka has, and they ended up signing up for library cards and checking out some materials after we processed their passports. Next item is our business resources. So the library has always had patrons who use the space and resources of the library as office space. But post-pandemic, we have seen a significant increase in this trend. There are just a lot more people that are working from home, that are doing remote work. So to meet the increased need, we have gathered together our existing office and business resources, supplemented them with some additional office supplies, thanks to a donation from Office Outfitters, and are working on providing additional advertising to highlight what we have to offer for those needing space to work. This is also another collaborative initiative. I know with some of the citywide studies that we've done, one of the recommendations that we've gotten from those is to look into getting a business center or innovation incubator here in the city. So as part of assessing whether that would be something that would be potentially useful for the community, you know, highlighting the resources that are already available at the library is a good first step. So we're excited to be part of that. And our last new item will be the Little Free Pantry, which is a great example of library partnering to meet a community need. So after having seen this idea implemented at the Kukona Public Library, our former staff members, Patsy Servie and Sue Abramson, met with local nonprofit leaders working to address hunger issues in the community. We do not want to jump in and create problems by just replicating what we'd seen elsewhere, especially since library resources are limited. We want them to go where they're going to have good effect for the community. However, the verdict when we reached out was that there was a tremendous need for another food pantry space in the community, one with broad hours for easy access and an ability to share perishable donations such as vegetables and fruits. So working as part of the, of this team, that has allowed us to recruit a lot of volunteers and got far more donations of food and also additional financial support. So everything you see in that picture in the pantry space is donated. That includes the refrigerator, which was a donation from Hanson's. So we have regularly heard from patrons how meaningful the pantry is to them, how helpful. And approaching the project as a partner has allowed to do us with far less dedicated time and resources than I would have imagined possible. So wrapping things up, some ongoing trends at evidence. The aforementioned increased usage by remote workers and entrepreneurs. The ways that the collection is being used have changed a little bit post-pandemic. The lower usage because of streaming of the physical DVD collection being the biggest example. Job services is something that we're seeing more and more of happening. Seeing ongoing need for technical support from folks that are seeking to make use of a wide range of online resources. There's more and more of life in the world that's going online, and if you don't have the equipment or more critically, the know-how to access that, then that could be a real challenge. So we field a lot of those questions, and we are working to continue to close the gap between what folks think that we have to offer and what we actually have. Since if we have a great service, but nobody is aware of it, then it's still not going to go, it's not going to be used. So working to get the word out. And onto our last slide here, which is a quick summary of goals that have been set by the library in 2023 and some of our significant efforts that we had made in accomplishing those. So engaging with, better with our new non-English speaking residents. We had some great programming focused on those. We have a number of ways in which we have, in handling staffing and handling our workflows, leaned hard into working smarter, using technology and outside-the-box thinking, finding new and better ways to get things done. Working on doing more advocacy for the community and better communicating to stakeholders and decision-makers the library's needs and the community's needs. We've also set up a portal that we've created to gather stories from patrons and staff on library impact. And we are working to identify and pursue new revenue sources. Passport Service is the biggest one, but we do also have a podcast with Patreon. And we've downsized in some of our things that we had stuffed into corners and extras in storage, which resulted in some resale funds. So I think that'll take me to the end here. In summary, 2023 was another busy and successful year for the Wapacka Area Public Library. As Wapacka's information center at the heart of the city, we continue to work hard to provide excellent service to the community. On the last page there, we are tremendously grateful to the folks at Public Works for helping us get the Reading Girl statue relocated to the east entrance to the library. Now, I am reliably informed that that picture is circulating over at Public Works Building with the caption "Reading Rocks." So, any questions? Did I forget the, I forget the fellow's name. What's the name of the Public Works?
That's, that's Brogan.
Brogan, right. I was going to say Branded, and I knew it wasn't right.
Henry.
Oh, thank you, Paul. In the past, when the term came up for the county board to consider their funding for the next five years, they kind of reached out and they had a working group of library representatives and elected officials. Are they going to take a similar tack this cycle?
Yes.
They are, okay, good.
My understanding is right now, they're working on finalizing that working group. And I think it's probably a good sign as far as this direction of negotiation that they seem pretty okay with that group being dominated by representatives from OWLS, from the Outagami-Wapacka library system, which strikes me as what you would expect to see if they're mostly asking, how can we support the libraries? Versus looking for places to cut. But, you know, budget season, so never know until it's finalized.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Eric. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have public input. And if there's anybody in the audience or anybody on council that would like to give public input on a non-agenda item, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Todd Rice, 1566 Foxfire Court here in Wapacka. Just first of all, I want to say it's really nice living here. We're from Stevens Point originally, been here since, I think, 2014. I guess the biggest concern I have I guess the biggest concern I have, living in this, in the city now for the last two years, is the the taxes and how much they are costing everybody. We live on Foxfire Court, a retired area. We're losing two residents to different cities because of our taxes. We're paying, the one house is paying over eight thousand dollars for a sixteen-hundred-and-fifty square foot ranch. I mean, that's ridiculous, to be straight honest about it. I can live across the street, I don't know the name of the roads, I still don't know about these years, right across from Foxfire Part Four, there's a subdivision up there. I found a house very similar to what I have, and their taxes are three thousand dollars less than my taxes. Three thousand dollars. It's a similar house. That's two hundred and fifty dollars a month. I also want to mention, I helped build a house on Foxfire this past year. We're thinking about putting up another spec house. It's very difficult. My daughter is looking to move here from Stevens Point. When you look at the tax costs, it's it's a thirty, forty, I just figured it out, on forty thousand dollars, that's two hundred and fifty dollars extra per month. I can find a house forty thousand dollars more just outside the city. And then, and still find like the river road lots and build there, for instance. I just want to let you guys know that there are people that are thinking about this kind of stuff. It's nothing personal, it's just, there's costs involved. We need to start looking at saving money places, talk, get your apartment heads, there's gotta be ways of having them, giving them incentive to find cost savings. It's not always gonna be about revenue, I know that, but I guess that's all I need to say on this. I, it just, the more and more I think about it, the more and more it kind of is upsetting. I'm paying over seven thousand dollars for a ranch house. My next-door neighbor across the street moving to Hortonville, his taxes, I think, are gonna be three thousand dollars versus sixty-six hundred, I think he's at. And it's it's a concern, and it's happening, it's, it's not that we don't like Wapaka, the city of Wapaka, but the taxes, you guys gotta figure this out, you gotta figure it out, it's a lot. My old home in Stevens Point, which was in a, in a great subdivision, new, a brand-new subdivision at the time, I just talked to him today, my taxes there for that house, which was, I think it was at like twenty-two hundred square feet, plus the finished basement is at sixty-eight hundred, and I told him it's still less than what I'm paying here. And I know Stevens Point's high. I guess that's all I gotta say. I just, please take that into consideration when you're, when you're going through your next budget, and maybe talk to your department heads, give them some kind of incentives to look for cost savings. Okay? That's all I, thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, anybody else? Public input? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Only one item, one item tonight, ordinance number zero-seven-two-zero-two-four, an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen, city of Wapaka subdivision and platting code. This is a second reading, which will, means we'll be voting on this tonight. Jared, would you like to remind us of the details?
Of course, I will keep it short. If there are any questions, just let me know. This one starts on page eighty-one of your packets. There is a red line that starts on page eighty-eight of your packets. So essentially, there's a few cleanup portions, but really the big change is looking at the pavement width requirements, and we're looking at doing this, again, looking at housing cost, you know, overall construction costs. As you do redo a road, the the ultimate cost does end up on the taxpayers or on the adjacent homes in a new neighborhood. So we're just looking at creating more of a range for those to kind of allow for more flexibility when planning new subdivisions or when looking at road reconstruction.
Thank you, Jared. At this time, I'd be looking for a motion to approve ordinance number zero-seven-two-zero-two-four, an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen, city of Wapaka subdivision and platting code.
I'm so moved, second.
With Henry? Moved by Velicker, second by Hagan, to approve ordinance number zero-seven-two-zero-two-four. Any discussion? Barb, would you take the role?
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. We'll move on to new business, and we'll take item eight, which we moved to number one, airport sanitary sewer extension easement agreement.
Justin? Thank you, and I appreciate the adjustment, council members. I'm trying to get to a middle school band concert tonight, so I appreciate that very much. This item starts on page one-twenty-one of your packet, goes all the way to one-twenty-nine, starting off with a memo and some background. So this pertains to our sanitary sewer extension construction project out at the airport, specifically at the, at the corner of Ferg Lane and Runway Drive. We're looking for an easement from a private property at that corner. So behind the memo is the actual agreement. This was drafted up by our attorney, was reviewed by our staff, and then also shared with the private property owner who has signed it and returned it back to us. This gives us the right to have a twenty-five-foot strip easement there for the purpose of this sanitary forest main, as shown in green there. The ability to get in there, construct it, and then in the future, maintain it. This will not impede on future development, because it is within the setback, and it is an improvement or helps us control costs on this project. The way, the reason why we're proposing to go on to private property, this is the area where we had the conflict with electrical lines to the east, so as we headed to the west, shifting this back, they would not, WPS would not have to move those. So that saved about sixty bucks a foot for about five hundred feet. And then, if we were to stay in the public right of way, we would have more pavement disturbance as we turned the corner and went up to Ferg Lane. So all in all, we figured we're saving around eight thousand dollars with those sort of things. On the flip side, this gentleman has agreed to work with us to help make his land a little bit more developable. There is a manhole at where this forest main is diving into, and we are going to create a connection point there for this vacant property. So there's a little bit of a of a benefit exchange here, no cost to getting this easement, and I guess just looking to get this in place before we start construction here on this project very soon.
Thanks, Justin.
Yep.
Any questions for Justin? Okay, I would be looking for a motion to approve the airport sanitary sewer extension easement agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Martin, second by Olson, to approve the airport sanitary sewer extension easement agreement. Any more discussion? Barb, would you please take role?
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Next item is Wapaka Area Convention and Visitor Bureau request for street closures for Strawberry Fest held June fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the Fourth of July celebration. Mitch, how you doing?
Good. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here again for my annual visit. Over the last three years, the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitor Bureau has held Strawberry Fest, utilizing the back parking lot of the Wapaka Area Chamber of Commerce, Trinity Lutheran Church's property, and Jefferson Street, Deer Street, and Division Street around Trinity's property, and we're continuing that setup again this year. Thousands of patrons, patrons attend Strawberry Fest, and many also travel or by pedestrian traffic, visit the farmer's market on East Fulton and the businesses in the downtown Main Street area. And there's been concerns about pedestrians crossing Badger Street during this time. Additionally, we've run into some congestion with booths on Jefferson Street between United Country Realty and Trinity Lutheran Church. We met with the city administrator, the police chief, and public works director to review changes in street closures for Strawberry Fest. So we're proposing additional closures, which would include Jefferson Street between Union and Badger, and I'll come back to kind of the whole request here in a second, and then additionally, Badger Street from Main Street to Division Street. And additionally, we're planning on utilizing United Country and Waypoint Financial Parking Lots and parts of the closed Badger Street for additional activities during Strawberry Fest. We're also planning for some kiddie carnival rides and some bounce houses in the event area. With these changes, our goal is to expand the festival and better bridge the gap between the farmer's market and the downtown businesses with Strawberry Fest. So the first, the first request on the next page here for Strawberry Fest, closing Jefferson Street from Union Street to Badger Street, and Jefferson Street from Badger Street to Deer Street for traffic. Closure of the entire length of Deer Street for through traffic, closure of Division Street from Badger Street to Deer Street for through traffic, and we would request necessary barricades for all of these closures from the City of Wapaka Street Department. And these closures we are looking at would be in effect from five PM on Friday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, until six PM on Saturday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And then, we're looking at the closure of Badger Street from Division Street to Main Street on Saturday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from five AM to six PM. Any questions on that?
Question? Okay. Be looking for a motion in a second to approve the street closures that Mitch just mentioned.
Motion to approve the street closures for Strawberry Fest.
Second. Moved by Dykstra, second by Peterson. To approve the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitor Bureau request for street closures for Strawberry Fest, held on June fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the Fourth of July celebration. Any discussion? Barb, would you please take role? Oh, I'm sorry, voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you, Mitch.
Okay, did you want me to go through the Fourth of July stuff, or are you?
Sure. We, you approved it, but go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
It would be the same as last year, the Main Street closure for the parade, and then Lakeside Parkway for the fireworks at night, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mitch. All right, next, next item is approval to use East Fulton Street for Saturday Farmer's Market during the summer. We have Ryan Brown from Wapaka Farmer's Market here. Ryan?
Yes, good evening. Yes, I'm Ryan Brown, here representing the Farmer's Market. I currently serve as the chairman of the newly-created board for the Farmer's Market. And so, yes, what I'm looking for tonight is a continuation of the allowance of being able to use East Fulton Street, as shown on that map, for our Farmer's Market. The one thing that I do want to bring to your attention is there's, there's one additional ask that we do have, is this year, as opposed to years in the past, we did have ten additional vendors come to us that want to be included with this Farmer's Market. So, that was a bit of a surprise to us as well. We just found out about that just a few weeks ago. And so, what we're looking at doing is potentially, if if this works, is using, moving just slightly north of what we're, we have shown on that map right there. And so, the idea being that we would have the additional vendor spots on either side of that corner there, and then we would ask to have the road closed pretty much right where the parking lot meets East Fulton for the duration of that Farmer's Market. Is there any questions on the the ask or the or the additional ask as well?
Okay, no questions, I guess.
It is a nice problem, and what's really nice about it is that these people are coming from several other communities from far, from far away. So what's happening is this Farmer's Market is gaining a lot of attention, and it's, it's a, it is a great problem to have, the fact that we're, we're growing, so it's been quite the asset.
It's a nice market. I walk by there every Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Okay, no questions? Be looking for a motion in a second to approve the use of East Fulton Street for Saturday, Saturday morning Farmer's Market.
Move to approve.
Moved by Olson, second by Velicker, to approve the use of East Fulton Street for the Saturday Farmer's Market. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Thanks, Ryan. Item three is a mayor's appointments to the following boards and commissions, and I'll handle that. First off, we have Austin Moore to the Emergency Management Committee, Dave Peterson to Water and Sewer Utility Board, Liliana Legal, Youth Representative, to Parks and Recreations Board, and Alton Ross, Youth Representative to the Library Board. After hearing the mayor's appointments to these various boards and committees, I would need a motion in a second to approve them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Nagel, second by Porczatsky, to approve the mayor's appointments to these boards and commissions. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Next, we have a request for a street closure on June seventh for Outdoor Movie in downtown Wapaka. Jared, this is your item.
Another street closure. Olson starts on page ninety-six or is on ninety-six of your packets, and it's just a map. So this is a similar map to last year when we did a movie in the summer. Same spot for the movie projector, same seating area, same overflow seating. The road closures, I believe for last year, was, were a little further to the west on East Fulton Street, but we are deciding to move that back, as we are just gonna have a single food truck for this event, to allow for some more parking, as you can kind of see in the top there, by the food truck purple box, and then the road closed sign, road closure for the parking lot and Jefferson Street is just past the Bank First Drive-Thru Parking, to allow for access through that, since that is open twenty-four-seven, we do not want to restrict that. But it closes it off just enough so that there's not headlights, cars moving around while the movie is trying to play. So we'll be looking for approval for these road closures on June seventh. Of course, if a rain day occurs, we'll be looking to try to work around that, may not have the roads closed, may just have to work through that, unless there's time to come back for council approval. With this street closure, we'd also, in the movie, we'd also have the street lights turned off close to the movie. The roads would be closed around four, four-thirty to start setup for the movie, and setup for the food truck. And then, as I mentioned, the Bank First Drive-Thru would remain open, and then obviously everything can be accessible if emergency services need to access through that area. It would just be cones or light road barricades that we could move.
Thanks, Jared. Any questions for Jared? Okay, be looking for a motion in a second to approve the street closure.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Velker, to approve the request for street closure on June seventh for Outdoor Movie in downtown Wapaka. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Next, we have ordinance number zero-eight-two-zero-two-four, an ordinance amending Chapter seventeen- Seventeen zoning code. This is the first reading, which means we won't be voting on this date. We'll be voting on it in two weeks. Jared, you're up again.
Thank you very much. The ordinance starts on page ninety-seven of your packets, and there is a red line starting on page one oh four of your packets. So similar to the quick recap in the public hearing, this is just looking at projecting signs and the height allowance, minimum height allowance from the bottom of the sign to the finished grade. I'm looking to change it from ten feet or from twelve feet to ten feet. Happy to take any questions now or anytime during, now in the second reading.
Anything? Next is a contract with Chain of Lakes Home and Garden for the two thousand twenty-four Downtown Flower Program. Aaron?
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, council members. This memo is on page one twelve of your packet. I've been talking about this for several years. This Downtown Flower Program started in two thousand and twenty-one when we redid Main Street. It continues to go. It's looked different a little the last two years in the fact that we've had matching, or not matching, but contributions, substantial contributions to help offset some of the cost. When we're talking about the total cost throughout the year for both labor, plant material, and installation, and then as well as watering, we're looking at about thirty-three to thirty-five thousand dollars depending on watering needs. We budgeted twenty thousand dollars as a city, and then we look to go and fundraise fifteen thousand dollars of outside sources. Last year, we were successful in doing that. We, at the end of the year, we had raised sixteen thousand, three hundred dollars for two thousand twenty-three, and we were able to remain within our budgeted amounts. In two thousand and twenty-four, we've already to date received fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars worth of commitments. I do know that there's a, I believe, a seventy-five hundred dollar grant that we are applying for as well, and private donations are still coming in. So we're hopeful any additional costs will just offset the city's cost of that twenty thousand and continue to chip away at that. This year's committed funds, I think is important to note, ten thousand dollars of that is for the second year in a row, comes from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, who did support it unanimously through that, through their board. And then the five thousand, four hundred eight is through private donations, through both individuals and businesses, both downtown and in other areas outside of the downtown. Over the past several years, city staff has requested cost estimates from a number of local vendors and area vendors, and we've only received cost estimate, or quotes back from two of those in the past, and that's Bonnie's Bloomers and Chain of Lakes Home and Garden. Last year, Bonnie's Bloomers did inform us that they were going through some business structure changes and just wouldn't have the capacity to do it, which would left Chain of Lakes Home and Garden as the only vendor in the area that was able to perform it. So their cost remains unchanged from last year. Last year, theirs was the exact same, twenty thousand dollars for plant material, five thousand dollars for labor and soil. And that is what they have quoted us again for two thousand twenty-four. Given the fact that the, the money has been raised, we do have that support from these other outside entities, and we're within budgeted amounts, it is staff's recommendation to approve the contract with Chain of Lakes Home and Garden at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. If it is approved, they are, they would be ready to plant before Memorial Day.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Corey?
So what was the total cost for us last year after donations came in, after we approved this at council last year?
So it was, the watering cost was under the ten thousand, the ten thousand dollar max that we had projected. So it was somewhere between that thirty-three and thirty-five. So then you reduce, I don't know the exact, but when you reduce it from that, you take the sixteen thousand off of that, so it was, you know, between fifteen and eighteen thousand dollars.
Total?
Was the city's, correct.
But we budgeted twenty-five.
We budgeted twenty. Okay.
Yeah. Got it. Aaron, do we have a, if we have excess funds, is there an account that this is dedicated for, or how does that work? I mean, if, if, you know, we raised so much and we budgeted so much, does it roll over or not?
Yeah, that's a great question. So these funds are all collected, it's a partnership with the Opaaca Area Chamber Foundation. So they're kind of helping collect the money, and then we invoice them, and they cut us the check back for what is needed. The other thing that's important to note is that these, some of these pledges are multiple year pledges, so some of them are up to three-year pledges, not just one year, which is helpful in planning.
Okay.
Dave?
I like the flowers, et cetera. But I go back to what I read on Facebook last year, when people see this twenty thousand or fifteen thousand, it seems like really a lot of money for a very pretty thing, and I don't know if you can say it pays itself off. That person commented, he said, wait, can't we just maybe get rid of the really big pots or small enough, just, you know, shorten it up just a little bit, and maybe you could save half the cost, you know? And I think it would still look nice, and maybe that's something to look into, too. I know we got the funding, that's fine, but maybe you could save a few thousand by doing that, including the watering and the care and all the plants themselves, and still look nice.
I, I, I would just, I'd like to piggyback off of that, because I, you know, we, we discussed this last year, that was at the first council meeting that I had. And, you know, we had public input tonight on taxes, and that's something that I, I think probably that's a concern for a lot of people, especially with inflation being high. I'm having a hard time continuing to support these kinds of things, and I understand that there's community support for them. You know, we talked at the last meeting about parking for a baseball game. These things just feel like wants instead of needs. And I, I'm, I'm just having a hard time continuing to support these things, especially because we haven't even talked about compensation, and that's something that we had said that we were going to talk about for our employees. So at some point, and I understand that there's multiple pots and things of that nature, but I don't know, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time supporting this. And if I'm the only one that feels that way, that, that's fine, but I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Henry?
Yeah, it seems like a frivolous cost, doesn't it? But to me, when you can raise almost half the cost voluntarily, it seems like a good expenditure of dollars for the city. So, you know, if we get into some tough budget discussions, this might be one that gets on the radar. But I'm wondering if ultimately where this goes is if we can get our downtown businesses to organize, create a business improvement district, put fees on themselves, they manage the money, and then maybe the city contributes five thousand to their effort and they manage it. And it's not a city-led endeavor. And I know the staff is sort of nibbling on that concept with the, with the business owners, but I thought where Dave was going on this is, while we have other business areas in the city, why aren't we working to beautify those? The downtown's so important, but we have Churchill Street Corridor, some other, you know, the Fulton Street where you could probably argue that maybe some treatments like we're doing in the downtown would be nice as well. So I thought that's where you might be going. But, boy, it would be nice to have a business improvement district if the businesses would, you know, embrace it, because this would be kind of an activity we wouldn't be leading, you know?
Just to that comment, Henry, and thank you, Dave and Corey, for your comments as For those who don't know, Jared has been meeting very frequently with the downtown business owners as a part of a group. I'm sorry, what do you coin the group?
The Downtown Partnership.
Downtown Partnership, thank you. And something like that has been discussed, actually a number of times, and continues to be discussed, whether it's, whether the first step is shared, collaborating to share services and make things more economical that way. Flowers always seems to come into that conversation, or whether it does eventually become a business district. So, yeah, I think point well taken, and council should just know that those conversations are happening. I guess the other thing I just want to mention is, you know, I remember sitting here last year at the same time, and actually, last year at the same time, we weren't quite sure. We didn't have the sixteen thousand dollars that we eventually got. We were probably five thousand dollars short of our goal when we did approve this contract. And, and I think I made the comment at that time, if, you know, if we don't hit those goals, A, it doesn't show that the other community members or community shareholders share the same sentiment that we do, and we might have to revisit that. When we went through the budget process in two thousand and twenty-three for two thousand twenty-four, we had by that time hit those goals, and which is kind of why it, it worked its way and made its way into the budget for two thousand twenty-four again. And, and here we sit, and, you know, it does look like, it's very likely that the city's contribution may be substantially less in two thousand and twenty-four. Having said that, I certainly hear Dave and Corey, and, and I think it can be a discussion during every budget meeting or every budget planning process, so.
Paul, did you have?
We're a tourist community, and it's very difficult to place a dollar amount on the return of what a beautiful, vibrant, and Main Street filled with flowers is. But I'm sure that it is something. So I think that, yes, it's, dollars need to be looked at and, and discussed and decided whether they're worth spending. But I think in the, in the long view, grand scheme of things, that when someone comes to Opaaca and they see all those beautiful flowers, and they get a positive image of our city, and they think, well, we might just have to come back here and, well, spend some more money. So that's, that's what I'd like to say.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? Okay. Oh, Colin.
I'll, I'll go along with Dave and, and Corey. Whenever I talk to anybody about the flowers, they say, hey, yeah, they're beautiful. What do you think about the flowers? They're great. All right. The next question I try and ask is, what do you think about thirty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money for the flowers? They're like, well, now that's a question. There's about thirty-six pots down there that I counted the other day, that's a thousand dollars a pot. It's quite a bit. The two hundred blocks, north and south, the main, two hundred, one hundred, one hundred, two hundred, north and south Main Street, I counted approximately fifty taxpayers. It's a big chunk of their tax burden we're giving right back to them in the form of, of flowers. So I'd echo the sentiment that, that this is a heavy expense. Now, whether or not you can justify it by saying it brings people to the community, that's, that's true, and if it does good business for their businesses, I'd like to see their businesses contribute more to the, the funding of it instead of all the taxpayers. I think, and I might be wrong at this, our total tax levy, I think, was somewhere around four point one million dollars. I don't know if that's exactly correct, but I think it's close. Thirty-five thousand dollars is almost one percent of that. I think we should keep that in mind as we're, as we're spending these funds, so.
I'll comment on that. The thirty-five thousand dollars is the total amount we're spending on the flowers, right? Correct. And that's being leveraged by donations, by the visitor, by the room tax money, I believe it is. And, you know, it, so the city's portion of it is not thirty-five thousand dollars. It's probably half or less. Number two, this is already in the budget, okay? We approved this last year. And we're, I think what we're, part of what we're doing here is approving the contract with the person actually doing, going to be doing the work. We're not approving the money necessarily. So I think the time to address this, in my opinion, is when you do the budget for two thousand twenty-five. If we all think it's an extravagant amount that's being spent, we can address it at that time, but we approved this last year. And I think the, I, the item here is to approve the contract with Chain of Lakes Home and Garden for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. I, I, I don't, actually, I agree with Paul. I, I think the flowers are a tremendous attribute to downtown, and to eliminate or substantially reduce them, I think would be a mistake. But we can discuss that in, you know, in August, in September. But we approved this amount for the budget already.
Eric?
Are we still looking for a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Olson, second by Dijkstra, to approve the contract with Chain of Lakes Home and Garden for two thousand twenty-four flower program for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Our real call vote, please.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
No.
Henry Velker?
Aye.
Eric Halverson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Next item, proposed key, FOB, and physical security plus policy. Aaron, you're up again.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. This memo is on page one seventeen of your packet. This is a, we've been talking about a more formalized key and FOB policy for several months, maybe even more than that. Our Personnel Committee has kind of give us an, an opportunity to continually talk about it and then bring something forward, so that the item that you'll see or the draft policy that you'll see attached to this has been passed through the Personnel Committee, and I'm going to turn it over to Josh, because he was instrumental in drafting this.
So this proposed policy really just kind of formalizes proper processes to get things done, who does what, and just some stipulations to make sure we're keeping our buildings and facilities and all of our equipment secure. Just, I'll run through it really quick at a high level. One exception up front is the police department would be managed by the police chief kind of outside of this policy, just because they have special standards to meet. Couple definitions up front, but it just talks about the processes when we've got new hires, when we've got terminations, making sure that both IT and the facility superintendent are notified, and that's something that oftentimes doesn't happen. Talks about making sure things are collected upon separation, talks about the process if, you know, a key or a FOB or alarm code is lost or anything like that. Just defined some stipulations with maybe short-term use, maybe going to a vendor or contractor, volunteer. Talks about the assignment of these, tracking and annual audit, and then just kind of lays out who's responsible for what, who the primary contact is, who the secondary contact is, and just kind of a roadmap to help staff and managers kind of navigate this process to make sure we're doing things a little cleaner and better than we have been in the past. So, no, that was kind of high level, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
This is something that, actually, originally, we were going to have as an administrative policy, but we are asking the city council to approve it, because we'd like to place in the employee handbook. It's just sometimes you have administrative policies that you find two years after you work, because they're not where you'd expect them to be. So this is the appropriate place for it.
Thank you, Aaron. Henry?
Was there a breach or something that sort of raised the level of interest in doing this?
I wouldn't say so much, but oftentimes, I'm not notified, or Jake isn't notified, and we've got some, a new star, or someone leaving, there's a lot of stuff that's not tracked. And I, I don't know how many times someone comes to me, hey, I need a building alarm code. I, I don't touch that system, that's not mine, or how many people go to JK and a key FOB for someone. So it's just helping to clean this all up and what the process is, and hopefully stuff's getting to the right person, so it's handled a little quicker and all that sort of stuff. I wouldn't say there was anything major that happened, it's just trying to clean this up. And I know years ago, Russ, when he was in the facilities superintendent position, this kind of based off that, he was trying to get something pushed through, and it just never really went anywhere. We didn't have, I guess, maybe a better, good mechanism like the Personnel Committee to get this through.
Anybody else? Okay. Be looking for a motion in a second to approve this new policy.
I'll move to approve the policy.
Second.
Moved by Peterson, second by Nagel.
Move by Peterson, second by Nagel, to approve the new city policy on keys, FOBs, and physical security, uh, city policy number 7.21. Any further discussion? Barb, would you take the role, please?
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Barb. Next up, we have policy 1.3 and 1.4, recruitment and selection. Aaron, you again.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, these are current policies within the City of Opaaca Employee Handbook. Also policies that the Personnel Committee has worked on and recommended to City Council. Uh, they are mostly amendments, or minor amendments and cleanups. And I'll go through those amendments with you. Um, so when we're talking about policy 1.3, this is employment practices and recruitment. Uh, the amendments, to summarize, are to basically clearly exclude seasonal and temporary positions from the requirement, um, for the, excuse me. Oh, it just, it, it basically takes the city administrator and the human resources coordinator out of some of the seasonal and temporary part-time, just because there's really not the capacity to do that. Does define that the full-time and the regular part-time will still have to, um, have approval from the city administrator and resource, or human resource coordinator. Also, um, it does provide some clarity that the city website will be our primary posting area, uh, clarity around the collection point for applications and the 12-month active window in which, um, applications will be active. What we've done here in the last year, and this is kind of formalizing what we have done for the last 12 months, is, uh, Kate Weeters is our deputy treasurer and our HR coordinator. In the past, we've had department heads basically run a lot of their hiring processes, and they've done a really good job. However, as department heads maybe change, and they have less or more experience in hiring people, it's, it can be easy to, to ask the wrong question, or it can be easy to make a mix-up with some HR-sensitive subjects. And what we don't want to do, we just want to create a system that doesn't allow for that, or that, that makes that very, very difficult. So by running it all through the HR coordinator, who has her structures and, um, um, policies in place, uh, and then having the city administrator look over it, we feel like this is just a, a better situation for the city. So, that is this one. And because I believe this is one, I'll, I'll also talk about policy 1.4. I guess before I do that, any questions on 1.3? Okay. Policy 1.4, same chapter, it's employment practices, uh, selection. So what we did here is, again, define the full-time and regular part-time applicants as opposed to the senior, or the seasonal and the temporary part-time. Also define the role of human resources coordinator, uh, in communicating and scheduling the interviews, which is, I've already touched on a little bit. Uh, clarifying the need for a minimum of a two-person hiring panel, uh, for any full-time or temporary, um, or I'm sorry, full-time or regular part-time, uh, hires. Um, and then the, defining the ability to direct, to, uh, have direct supervisors handle that seasonal and temporary part-time. So city administrators and department heads may not be hands-on in those types of, because if you look at the parking and rec department, we have, you know, we might have 100 seasonal, um, hires. It just isn't, isn't efficient. So, again, a lot of cleanup, um, and some structure changes that we feel like puts the city in a better place when hiring.
Thanks, Aaron. Questions for Aaron? Okay, oh, great.
Uh, Aaron, just out of curiosity, when we do post a position, what are the different platforms that we're using to bring in the pool of applicants that we're looking for?
So it depends on the position. Uh, let's just use a department head position, for example. Like, we'll use, we'll use our city website, we'll use social media, we'll use LinkedIn, uh, we'll use professional associations, which many times there are not just one, there could be two or three. Um, I would say those are the main ways that we get the word out there.
Good.
Anybody else? Okay, I would need a motion in a second to approve these updates to the City of Opaaca Employee Handbook Policies 1.3 and 1.4.
Make a motion to approve those, both of those.
Second.
Move by Hagan, second by Nagel, to approve the updates to the City of Opaaca Handbook, Employee Handbook Policies 1.3 and 1.4. Any further discussion? Barb, would you please take role?
Yep. Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Next, we have license report number 1673 Taxi Drivers Licenses. Anything going on, Barb? Okay. All right, I need a motion in a second to approve them.
I'll move.
Second.
Move by Peterson, second by Olson, to approve license report number 1673. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next, we have license report number 1674 Operators Licenses, also known as Bartenders Licenses. Same thing, Barb?
Yep, all the backgrounds are done.
Okay, good. Need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve license report 1674.
Aye.
Move by Dykstra, second by who? Velicker, to approve license report number 1674 Operators Licenses. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have no issues or project discussion tonight. Next, we have communications and recommendations of the mayor. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thanks, Paul. Hopefully you guys can hear me okay. Yeah, I, I just wanted you to, to, um, be up to date a little bit on, on the, uh, where we are with the, uh, full-time position in the fire department. Uh, remember that, uh, our district is made up of, uh, uh, four townships, the Town of Dayton, Town of Farmington, Town of Opaaca, and Town of Lind, and the City of Opaaca. So there are far, five members of that community, and, uh, we are working together. And actually, we're using, uh, the district is actually using, uh, Aaron, uh, to do that process. So Aaron, maybe you could just go through that real quick, on, on where we are and, and where we're going from there.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so we did have a district meeting, uh, yesterday to review applications. Um, there were, we didn't get a ton of applications for the position. Uh, we have seven in total, uh, although all of them were qualified for the fire chief position. Um, one of those was an internal candidate, and, uh, we will be moving forward to contacting individuals who will receive interviews. Uh, those interviews will likely happen. We're trying to nail down sometimes a couple commission members. Um, are farmers, and there's been a lot of rain, and planting the fields has been very tough lately, and we want to make sure all commissioners can, uh, can be there. Um, we are also working with, in addition to me as a non-commissioner, just helping facilitate the process, we'll also have, uh, Chief Robert Whitaker, who's the fire chief of the North Shore Fire Department, like the Whitefish Bay area, north of Milwaukee. He's going to help as, uh, as just a, an expert. Um, and yeah, we hope, uh, sometime in June to, to have more progress to share.
Yeah, and just to add to that, thanks, Aaron. Uh, just to add that, to just remember, uh, through the budget process, just like, uh, we were talking about something else before, but, uh, the budget process, you did approve the hiring of a full-time position in the fire department, and there was a minimal, uh, increase in cost to the city to, to get that full-time position. So, uh, we were able to, uh, secure some additional, the district was able to secure some additional funding from the state of Wisconsin that, that will pay a, a good portion of that, uh, for now, and hopefully for, uh, well into the future. So, that's a good thing. Uh, as far as, uh, the presentation that was made, uh, and I just want to say this real quick, uh, during, uh, public, uh, public discussion tonight, and you have to appreciate it when anybody comes and speaks in front of you, because it's not easy for them to do that. So, I appreciate Mr. Rice, uh, showing up and, and giving his opinion on things. It reminds me, though, that, uh, Aaron and, and Jared, and this should be added to our, our DIRTT discussion, and also probably at city council level at some time, discussed, uh, the advantages of, of living in the City of Opaaca, and the differences that are between the townships and villages versus cities, uh, and how we, how taxes are handled there. Um, he is accurate, though, and I, and I did some quick calculations. He is accurate. You know, if you take a $500,000 house and you put it in the Town of Farmington, you probably will pay quite a bit less in taxes, so. But that's where we need to come in and just say, hey, you know, this is what we're doing, and we need to make sure that we are spending our, our, our money wisely to just, we can't just say, hey, we're a city, and so we should be, uh, we should be able to charge more taxes. We have to be able to justify that. So we need to do a better job with that. He's a newcomer to the City of Opaaca, although he lived on the Chain of Lakes for years, um, so, I know the guy. Uh, just wanted to talk about the flowers just a little bit. I, I want to echo Paul and Paul. Uh, I think it's a, it's a valuable asset to the downtown, the flowers. Um, I think the, the ultimate goal is for the city to only pay their fair share because we are part of the downtown, you know, so we should be only paying for our vases. We're working that, we're, we're hoping to work in that direction, but, um, we want to, uh, in my opinion, we want to continue that. So again, this will be discussion that we'll have, continue to have, uh, not just during the budget process, but we'll try to have it with staff throughout the year too, to make sure. I can't remember what, uh, all the person Dykstra said with the flowers on the percentage, but, uh, the 35,000, and he was using 35,000 and 4.1 million dollars. And of course, Paul Mayo, you corrected him and said, the city isn't spending 35. But the percentage, I thought he said, was 10%, and that just is not accurate.
Just one.
Yeah, it's 0.85% of, of that amount. So, just wanted to bring that up. Uh, again, we will continue to have that discussion. I, I, I appreciate, uh, Corey and Dave Pete, and Colin, your comments on that, that, um, that is a, a cause that should be maybe burdened more by the businesses in the downtown area. And then the, the last thing, and Aaron, I'm going to bring this back to you again, is if you want to just, uh, update them, I know you had it in your newsletter too, but update them on where we are with negotiations with the police union?
Uh, yeah, um, so, uh, we have had one meeting. Uh, we reviewed a proposal, uh, from the WPPA, uh, and had a good meeting, productive meeting, and then we are taking a three-to-four week break as we kind of discuss some things, and we'll offer them a, a counterproposal, and we're going to talk about that. Um, when is that, guys? I think it's the 21st. Is that right? The 21st of May in the afternoon, so actually the next council meeting day. We'll just continue to work through, through those conversations, and when we have something, uh, to bring to city council, uh, we will do that.
Yeah, um, I guess I have nothing else, Paul. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I'd be looking for, Colin.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Dykstra here. Uh, in, in Aaron Jensen's latest Need to Know, there was, uh, an announcement about, uh, grant, and I was hoping that it would be talked about a little bit tonight, and I wondered if anybody wanted to mention it, because I think it's terrific news, and it goes to, uh, the point that the city is working so hard to, uh, lower our taxes by, uh, going after these grants. So if, if, if that's something you're not, if you're able to talk about, I think it'd be appropriate.
Colin, thanks. Yeah, I mean, we, we've talked about it. Actually, the notice actually went out, so we can make it official. Of course, Justin isn't here, and we didn't have department head reports tonight, but Aaron, you're on top of that. I think Jared is too, but if you can just mention that. Thank you, Colin, for that reminder.
Yeah, thanks, Colin. Yeah, so if you didn't see my newsletter last week, uh, really, really exciting news. Uh, the City of Opaaca was notified that we have been awarded $2.077 million approximately to help reconstruct a portion of West Fulton Street, which would run from, um, Main Street to Hillcrest, or I'm sorry, Harrison, which is Highway 49. And, um, that, the reason for that stretch is because the program that we applied through, through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, is a local roads improvement program, and anything west of that was not eligible, as it was a connecting highway. Um, so that's a 50-50 match. Uh, we talked about it in the strategic plan, um, how important that actually, I think, rose to like the number one priority from a capital infrastructure standpoint. And we've talked about how, you know, we'll need large amounts of funding that match that to be able to execute a project, which we have. Um, you know, I, I would like to put a, a formal press release together, but I, I'll wait to do that until after. We've, we will have to formally accept it. We just haven't received the instructions from the DOT yet on how to do that. Um, so we'll talk about how that works into our capital plans and everything moving forward. And it is out there a little bit. You know, get this money, and you don't have a road done right away. Right now, we're looking at construction potentially 2027. That's how that looks. But the only thing I'll add to that, too, is that's not the only grant we have out there. There's also a federal grant for West Fulton Street that does cover other parts of West Fulton. Um, we scored just outside of being recommended last year for that funding. We're hoping we improved on that grant, and who knows, maybe, maybe we'll, we'll have more good news to share. And if we don't, this is, this is very good news, and I have to share this to, um, we were, well, yeah, we were, we were ranked as the number one out of 133 grant applications, which is amazing, and, and it was very, very important because we were also the second highest ask in the state of Wisconsin. So whenever there's that high of an ask, there's always discussion on should we put this much into one community? And when they looked at, actually, the, the highest ask actually ranked number two. So they said, well, they're number one and two, um, but we think it's appropriate to move forward with recommending it for funding. So, kudos to Justin, Greg, all of DIRTT, all of city council, because there's a lot of stuff that goes into that, that you guys, you know, don't necessarily know or see, but it's a lot of the actions we take in planning processes and accepting plans and adopting plans over the course of years. So, appreciate.
And I'd just like to add on to that. I think it's really important to remember. I, I think the grant writer position started with, like, the Neville family funded that for the first year. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, you know, through the generosity of, you know, a family in the community that owns a business, a very success, a successful business, and then eventually that cost was taken on by the school district and the city. I mean, the amount, the, the millions of dollars that that position has brought to this community for schools and for municipalities, um, you know, for a family to take that cost on, um, you know, but I, I think that that, you know, that's worth remembering and mentioning, um, how that got started, and we can't say thank you enough.
All right, Mayor, anything else?
I don't. I already passed it back to Paul.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right, anything else for the meeting? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion moved by Hagan, second by Olson, to adjourn until our next meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 22nd, 2024. Subject to call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:30. Thank you all.